Fifteen council meeting. Would you please join Councilman Homan in the pledge allegiance and stay standing for the invocation, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Lord, for bringing us safely through this summer. As our children return to their classroom, we ask that they complete another successful, safe year. As we return to the business of guiding our city through the challenges and opportunities, we ask your continuing help for us to lead wisely. Please blanket our fire, police, and soldiers with your protection as they continue to provide safety to our community. Thank you for hearing our plea. Amen.
Thank you, Councilman Homan. All right, again, we need to have a motion to excuse Councilman Campbell and Councilman Stipp, who will not be attending the regular meeting tonight. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Councilwoman Osborne and a second from Vice Mayor, what's with the Vice Mayor? Is it Laura Tonno? Is that you? Okay, all right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the ayes have it. So let's go to the communication. We have two communication items tonight. The first one is Goodyear Arts and Culture will share with the council the arts program supported by the 1,500 donation by the Pebble Creek Art Club and will recognize art club members. Hello, it's nice to see you, Guilene.
Oh, good evening. Tonight, we're here to recognize the Pebble Creek Art Club and to share a little bit about the Goodyear arts education opportunities that were provided this summer and coming up this fall. So, in late spring, Judy Bihari and Charlene Romanos of the Pebble Creek Art Club called me and they scheduled a meeting with me because they were very interested in becoming more involved in Goodyear arts education opportunities for youth. They really saw how the arts supports communities. They wanted to do something that built confidence in students, exposed them to more artwork, and so they sat down, they collaborated with me to kind of identify some programs that would meet those needs. And to support those programs, they went back to their art club and they came up with $1,500 that they donated to the city to support these programs. So two of the programs that occurred this summer were Follow Your Art Junior, which was a teen art portfolio development class that was done in collaboration with Bonnie Lewis of Catitude Gallery, as well as an Arts Interact class, which was adaptive visual arts, and this is for students with physical and cognitive challenges. Follow Your Art Junior was a great opportunity for high school students to come in and have some studio time to work with professional artists, arts educators, and meet representatives from higher education. These are kids that are looking at having art as a career, and they're finding that during the high school day with so many requirements out for their credits for graduation, they're not getting as much time in their art room. And so we provided this opportunity free of charge for these kids this summer to be able to come in and meet with professionals that could guide them on their path to the right direction. Arts Interact was a great program that gave students from ages five to 19 an opportunity to try different forms of art mediums, to work in a creative environment that was supportive and provided them an opportunity to be self-expressive and really work and build community with one another. Coming up this fall, we have two more programs that will be supported by this donation, one being Tuned Up, which will be a program where you come have breakfast, watch some cartoons, and learn how to draw animation, and also provide more professional artists to go into the classrooms in our local schools. With the success of this summer's programs, Arts Interact and Follow Your Art Junior, we are planning on having those programs also occur next summer, 2016. So we're very excited with what happened with those. So at this time, I would like to invite up our guests. First, I'd like to ask Judy Bihari and Charlene Romanos of Pebble Creek Art Club to come up and join me. I personally want to thank these ladies for their passion for the arts and for coming out. This was, I didn't go to them to ask for this, they brought this to us, and I'm just so excited that they're part of our community and wanted to share this with us. So I would like to give them a hand for their work. I'd also like to welcome Jane Odom and her assistants up to the front. Jane is an artist and educator, and she is the provider for our Arts Interact program. And Jane has something that the students created that she would like to present to Judy and Charlene.
So, we've done this program a couple of different times, and I've taught kids with special needs for very many years. But what was interesting this summer was we had this community that kind of forms, not only because I had amazing assistants with me, both Alyssa and Chase, but all of a sudden, the dads started coming, and the brothers and sisters started coming, and the parents started interacting with each other, and we had this little art community that was also a resource among itself, and they're sharing things about their education, and it was just a fabulous experience. But the kids did a lot of work with clay, and they wanted to tell you thank you. So they made a little pocket for you guys. As a thanks for your funding, and just, they really, they worked hard at it.
We will put this on display in our art club shortly.
Thank you very much.
So, before we move on to take a picture, I do want to mention that at Pebble Creek, they do have an art walk planned October 17th. It's from 3:00 to 7:00 p.m. The work of the students from this summer will be on display at the art walk, and they will be having a 50/50 raffle there, and all proceeds from that are going to be donated also to our arts education initiatives so that we can further the work that we're doing. So thank you very much.
One more time, a round of applause.
We would like to get a picture with Mayor and Council if possible.
Yes, and before we do that, does anybody like to make any comment? Because it's extraordinary that you come forth and help like this. I'm so proud to be a part of that neighborhood, and we have so many talented people, and I'm sure there are talented people in every neighborhood. You're an example of what can happen throughout the city of Goodyear. We can have parents coming from other neighborhoods to contribute, so thank you for setting the goal. It's very nice.
We hope to keep funding art.
Yes.
And education.
Carrie?
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you to your whole club after just hearing about education. This is such a wonderful program, and thank you from the bottom of my heart because you really are working as a community and not just other people in our city, but I think our state could learn from this type of program, how you guys are reaching out and working together, and just across the generations, and it's just very exciting, and I will be at the art walk.
Great, thank you, hope to see you there.
Joan?
Thank you. I just wanted to say simply that you are making difference, and you know, obviously that came into your mind, and sometimes you never know if you're going to, but you certainly have, and I think that's very apparent, and I'm glad that you told us of just kind of those interactions because relationships matter, and you brought just even parents together, so that's really cool. Thank you.
Joe?
Again, it never amazes me, it's another great example of people stepping up in our community, giving of their time to help others. Again, thank you. Can't praise enough of the volunteers and the people who do this in the community, and again, that's what makes Goodyear such a great community. Thank you again.
Carolyn?
Well, I just wanted to mention too, what your funds provided was an opportunity also for our local art gallery, Catitudes, to get involved with the children, which is a very key part of their mission for their very existence, is to continue art education. So what a win-win-win. So thank you.
So, I think they want a picture. Okay. Everybody have moved this way. They won't bite you tonight. Tomorrow I might bite you.
Thank goodness, not tonight.
But not tonight. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
All right, the next communication is the Parks and the Recreation Department will recognize the seasonal and part-time staff working at Loma Linda Swimming Pool for providing a safe and a high-quality aquatics experience to the public.
Good evening, thank you, Mayor and Council. It is my pleasure to introduce you, the new Recreation Superintendent, Mike Beadle. He is overseeing all things recreation, including the aquatics operations, and it has been a busy summer aquatics operations indeed. It wouldn't be possible without the hard work and dedication of several part-time seasonal staff who do everything from teach the lessons, to guard the pool, to maintain the operations, from top to bottom, pool chemistry and so forth. So, Mike has prepared a brief slide presentation tonight to kind of show you some of their great work, and then we're fortunate enough to have a few of them here tonight to be formally recognized. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mike.
Welcome, Michael.
Thank you, thank you very much. I appreciate the time, thank you, Mayor and Council, for the time and the opportunity to really showcase our programs and, you know, appreciate our staff here. So, you know, I think a picture says a thousand words, so instead of coming up here and telling you all about how wonderful our programs are and our staff is, we really liked the opportunity to show you through our slideshow.
That's cute.
And we had a little background sound, but it doesn't look like it's coming up, so through this slideshow, we just wanted to kind of showcase all the different offerings and things that we have. So through some of our informal swimming, and also our swim lessons and swim and dive teams, so you guys can take a look and just see the enjoyment of the youth and adults
In Michael's defense, we had a really cool song queued up.
I figured you did.
Trust me on that.
I was going to sing for you, but you wouldn't want that, so...
There's a little technical difficulty on that, so we do apologize, but like Mike said, a picture speaks a thousand words, and a tremendous summer we have had, and here's a few highlights.
Yeah, and I mean, like, as you can tell from, you know, from the slideshow, you know, we really had a large and diverse program, a really busy summer. I mean, from, you know, Labor Day or Memorial Day to Labor Day, I mean, we packed the house with, you know, open swim and swim lessons, and, you know, we engage our community through swim team and dive team, and we offer, we're offering a new program called Aqua Aerobics for the first time this summer, and that really took off, and that was a great opportunity for our adult community to take advantage of some of the programs at our swimming pool. So, you know, as you can tell up there, we had over 20,000 heads guarded in the pool, so the 20,000 people came through our door, and our lifeguards and our staff, you know, again, guarded and kept a safe and clean environment for all those people to participate in. So, you know, we're ecstatic with how our summer has gone. We're wrapping up our programs right now, but we still have a couple ongoing. We still have some swim lessons and open swim time, so we'll be wrapping up our summer program, but, you know, it's been a really exciting summer for us and a really great program for the community. And, you know, we have these great programs and we have this, you know, great facility, and really none of it could be accomplished without our wonderful lifeguard staff. You know, they're very dedicated to our program. There's some kind of information up on the screen for you, but really, to become a lifeguard, they have to take a 35-hour certification course, so they can't just come in and say, hey, I want a job, and get a job. They've really got to be dedicated to, you know, to the swimming program and really have a passion for, you know, lifeguarding and for teaching youngsters how to swim and all of those things. So it's a really great staff, they're committed. I mean, it's not cool out there during the summer, and they're up there in the chart, you know, up there in the chair guarding, and it really just shows that they have a passion for what they do. So, you know, we're extremely appreciative of them. You know, a lot of them are college students and high school students, and, you know, we're employing them, giving them the opportunity to get some job experience, you know, over the summer when they head back to school and things, so we're really excited. We had 15 returning, about 75% of our guards returned from last summer, and a lot of them are former high school swimmers, former high school divers, so not only do they have the experience and the knowledge, but they also have the skill set now to pass that knowledge on to the next generation of potential swimmers. So, you know, our guards have been amazing this summer. We are so appreciative of what they do every day, and so at this time, you know, we'd like to, you know, just say thank you to our 2015 summer aquatic staff, and we'd like to invite them up and, you know, give them a certificate of appreciation. So the first one is David Carvahal. And Laura Pina. And like I mentioned, this is just a representation, you know, of our total staff. A lot of them had to go back to school, ASU, NAU, or starting school again, and so we have a lot of our staff heading back, but, you know, from all of us in the Parks and Rec Department, we really appreciate everything that you guys do. You guys have no idea the impact you have on our department and on the community, so thank you very much.
And if you'll notice, some of them literally came from the pool. Their swim shorts are still wet, so although this is a formal environment, we do excuse that as they hustled over here to be with us tonight. So if we could get a photo, that'd be appreciated.
Yes, absolutely.
Great.
If you could have come to the pool, that would have been...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's go to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items 6.1 through 6.3, by title only, please?
Item 6.1, approved draft minutes from a regular meeting held on July 6, 2015, and a regular meeting held on July 13, 2015. Item 6.2, adopt resolution number 15-1719, authorizing the mayor to execute amended mutual aid compact for participation in the Arizona Emergency Management Master Mutual Aid Compact between the Arizona Division of Emergency Management and the City of Goodyear. Item 6.3, accept the dedication of an exclusive waterline easement adjacent to the easterly side of 143rd Avenue South of Van Buren Street from Word Enterprises LLC and Illinois Limited Liability Company.
Thank you. Does anybody from the public wish to remove an item on the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item? All right, could I please have a motion as...
Sorry, Mayor, I do have a question.
Yes, question on...
Thank you, 6.2.
What question is?
For Tim or Paul, whichever. Is this a, an update? I mean, two questions. One, I mean, I just figured this was already taken care of, so what's the difference now? And two, how does, if anything, impact us with Mobile, with this?
Madam Mayor and Council, this is, the only difference is when they did it a year ago, if the schools were not on board. So the only thing they added was the school districts to this. So that's, it is the same document with that one addition.
With the school districts?
Yes.
So, meaning that this would impact with Mobile, that...
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, ma'am. One of the concerns was, so we reached out to a community, and if we needed to utilize school buses, one of the discussions that we had was who would pay the insurance for that school bus driver? Would it be the school, or would it be the entity that's requesting them? So they worked through Maricopa County and their attorneys, so they would come into agreeance, so if we needed to reach out, then those things would already be taken care of, and since the schools agreed with it, they're agreeing to, if that needs to happen, it's already taken care of ahead of time.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I have a motion, please, in a second? So moved. Second. I heard a motion from Councilman, Vice Mayor Laura Tonno, and a second from Councilman Stipp. Roll call vote, please. Changed.
Pizzillo?
It's Joe. Oh, it was you? Oh, I didn't hear your voice, Joe. All right, so the second was by Councilman Pizzillo. I didn't mean to take that, your name out of that, sorry about that. All right, well then, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Homan?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Passes 5-0.
I'm kind of a backtrack because I left the public out, and that's terribly important, that we certainly make sure we include our citizens, so I'm going to go back to number item five, it's a time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? All right, then I've taken care of that, so now let's go on to the business. The first item is to approve the contract for the construction of the digester rehabilitation project. Brad Richards, project engineer, to present.
The Engineering Department Cooperation Environmental Services Group is pleased to present the 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility Digester Construction Contract for Felix Construction. Approval of this contract is going to allow us to proceed with construction of this rehabilitation The project is located at the main Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility in 157th Avenue, and the project will be constructed completely on, the work will be completed within this site. It's located just north of Hula River, just west of Estrella Parkway along Rosier Road. The facility provides wastewater treatment for the city, Goodyear residents, businesses, and adjacent utilities. It currently produces the A-plus effluent that is being used at the Soil-Acquerford Treatment Site, which is located on the northwest corner of Estrella Parkway and Hummer Road. Here we have an aerial view of the existing facility. The red boxes highlight the non-operating aerobic digester, which we're calling North Basin, and this is the subject of the main part of the project. The South Basin is the operating aerobic digester at this time. The North Basin was originally constructed in 1983 as part of the original treatment plant, and the South Digester was originally constructed in 1992 as part of a plant expansion. These digester basins were originally operated as what is known as oxidation ditches from 1993 to approximately 2009, where they treated the secondary effluent in the plant. These ditches were repurposed in 2001, and now they're used as aerobic digesters, and this is used as part of the solids handling facility for the plant. It also provides solid handling facilities, support for the Corrigan Plant in Estrella Mountain Ranch as well. When the existing aeration basins were modified in 2001, this was to address increased nitrification and denitrification treatment requirements. This particular slide shows the existing basin, more of up close, and it exhibits some of the features and some of the issues that we're addressing. This rehabilitation project will reline the existing North Digester Basin and replace existing equipment that is beyond its serviceable life and can no longer be maintained. The project will provide redundancy for the solids handling facility by now being able to utilize two operational basins, which will allow cleaning and inspection of the South Digester Basin. The project will immediately put into place corrective action in accordance with Maricopa County Environmental Services Department requirements. So, on the left-hand side is the aerial, the North Basin is highlighted. To the right is the basin as it appears now, it's been cleaned out, a structural inspection was done some months ago to assess and scope out the work that we need to do during construction. The lower right-hand corner gives you another view of what the ditch looks like, and a close-up there, red arrow, shows some of the equipment that needs to be replaced to make this ditch functional. A simplified overview of the construction process for the basin relining. We see on the left, upper left-hand corner gives you the empty basin view. We're putting in a reinforced polypropylene liner to make it, to help address the cracking in the, in the structure itself and make it waterproof. So the operators come in, and the contractor will spread out these sheets of this polypropylene plastic. Just below there, sort of in the middle of the screen, you can see step two, they seam up the liner, and then on the left-hand side of the screen, you can see what the basin might look like once the liner's actually installed. And then moving on quickly to step three, that's actually a picture of what the South Digester looks like now, and that would be how we envision the North Digester operating as well. They're identical facilities. The project funding and budget for this effort was approved in fiscal year 2016 CIP. The budget approved was $621,300. Felix Construction Contract is $580,294.38, and this is $41,005 less than the approved CIP. The project is not encumbered, and additional funds will be allocated for additional services and/or contingency if required during construction. And we feel this is important because once the North Basin is put into service, part of the agreement with Maricopa County is to de-water the South Basin, which has never been taken offline, and inspect that as well as clean it out, too. been taken offline, and inspect that as well as clean it out, too. So, our staff recommendation, we'd like to authorize, have you authorize the city manager to approve the contract with Felix Construction Company and authorize a purchase order for their contract in the amount of $580,294.38. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Brad. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion a second to approve the $580,294.38 contract for the construction and contract with Felix Construction, Inc. for the digester rehabilitation to the City of Goodyear 157th Avenue Water Reclamation Facility and authorize the purchase order to be issued? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Holman and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Sorry, I'm going to giggle. So, open for council discussion. Councilman Osborne?
Can you tell us the liners that's going in? Is this an added safety measure or is this something that, you know, is new and so now finally because we're bringing it online, that's why you're putting the liners? I'm just curious. Just education, that's all, is why I'm asking.
Well, I guess the easiest way to answer that would be, just due to the age of the basin itself from the 80s, originally it was designed to function a little differently. On top of that, you can see on the photo that there's been some attempts at correcting the cracking. Because basically, it's a sprayed-on shotcrete, if you will, kind of like you see at a pool even. It's reinforced. But over the years, they've had some sidants behind the walls. And the only way to create a waterproof, I guess, basin now without completely reconstructing it, the cost-effective way to do that is to use this polypropylene liner. We investigated several different options. One is the liner, several different materials. There's a HDPE liner, which is a high-density polyethylene. We also looked at trying to, you know, re-shotcrete it, patch it. And in terms of longevity, which is what you want on this liner versus cost, this polyethylene liner was the, or procolene liner was the best balance between the two.
Good, thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other question? Yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
Just as a follow-up, what's the life expectancy of that liner?
Right now, we have it at a 20-year lifecycle.
Okay.
Brad, I just want to comment, those are great pictures, okay? The photos really do help. And I think so many times that we're not working with this part of the city very much and so it is very difficult. And so, I thought this was a very good example of it. Very helpful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I'm glad it helped.
All right, so are we ready for vote on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. Let's go to 7.2, to approve the contract for the, okay, Vados, Vedos, Vados Zone Injection Well Project. Hello, Mark. How are you tonight?
Very well, thank you, Mayor Lord. Members of the council.
Good, we're back.
So am I. So, the recommendation before you this evening is to approve the $620,004 contract for engineering design and construction administration services contract with Corolo Engineers, Inc. for the Vados Zone Injection Well Project of the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility and authorize the purchase order to be issued. Just a quick historical note, the current Soil-Aquifer Treatment Site was identified as a future city center location and was decommissioned in 2008. All reclaimed water was sent historically to Palaveri Nuclear Power Generation Station at no charge. The city does not have currently a permanent recharge solution and recharge via Vados Injection Wells proposed a new recharge permanent solution. So, here's kind of a recharge update. The SAT site was quickly and temporarily recommissioned in June 10, 2014 and is recharging all the city's reclaimed water produced at the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility, generating approximately $720,000 of financial value and water resource value. Funding for this project came from Carryover Impact Fee CIP funding, was reallocated and transferred to this project, amount of $2,400,000. The city was also successful in receiving one of only two Arizona grants from the Bureau of Reclamation, amount of $300,000. And the water resource operating budget was approved, $135,000 for the permit fees for this activity, giving this budget, this project total budget of $2.835 million. The completed work thus far, we've developed a hydrologic model, which was used to determine the best locations for these Vados Injection Wells. And of course, these are in alignment with and proximity to the current backbone reclaimed water infrastructure running north Estrella Parkway up to Van Buren, east on Yuma to Bullard and then north on Bullard Avenue. We've successfully completed the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality Aquifer Protection Permit and also the Arizona Department of Water Resources Underground Storage Facility Permits. We've obtained those permits. That model, the hydrologic model, was also used for additional effort. We were required to renew our designation of assured water supply application. So, that model was used to submit that application to Department of Water Resources. And also, we used it to quantify the amount of physically available groundwater that could be delivered from the admin water district. That was also completed identifying that total volume. And then we are also evaluating increase in legal withdrawal authority from two additional wells. So, we got a great economy of scale from this model. The proposed work before you this evening will complete the necessary environmental assessments associated with the grant and based on the best proposed hydrologic model locations, begin to design necessary infrastructure for recharging reclaimed water supplies. Just real quickly, some additional city benefits. The Vados Injection Wells do not need large tracts of land. We're looking at maybe hundreds of square feet for these particular locations. The reclaimed water would recharge and replenish, again, the same aquifer pulling all of our city's water demands from. Reclaimed water has and can continue to be used to meet our replenishment obligations. And reclaimed water, of course, has financial and water resource value, significant value. And again, reclaimed water can be stored underground and it's enlarging our long-term storage credit bank account. And of course, Class A-plus effluent has better water quality features than the poor quality groundwater. So, we're actually increasing the water quality within the aquifer. For this work, we're looking at a site along the east side of Estrella Parkway, just south of Van Buren. There's kind of a map here showing you the map aerial photo looking down on Estrella Parkway. The infrastructure is currently located on the east side of Estrella Parkway, the reclaimed water line. So, we'll be looking along the city's public utility easement and right-of-way to the east of that. This had favorable hydrologic conditions for the Vados Injection Wells and yields the best chance for the highest recharge rates. We're looking to design these for underground vault systems that would be unobtrusive within the right-of-ways. And just kind of depicting here on the right, the far-hand right side is showing a vault that have the infrastructure going to an injection well going to the subsurface. So, trying to put these into a subsurface vault system. These are actually, right here is a picture of an actual injection well in the City of Goodyear. This is from the Phoenix Goodyear Airport North Superfund Site. There's several of these injection wells located on Dysart Road. That picture on the left is three feet in width, five feet in length, and approximately five feet in depth and they have their injection well. That's our hope, that it would look something similar to this, but based on infrastructure challenges and easement, it may be different configurations. But our goal is to try and have all of these in a vault or underneath the ground. And with that, I'd happily entertain any discussions or questions you may have. Also, Brad Richards from Engineering Department is the project manager and Corolo Engineering is also here tonight, should you have any questions for the potential contractor.
Mark, thank you. And again, the photos are great. It really does help.
Great, glad to hear it.
Appreciate it. So, are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I please have a motion in a second to approve $620,004 contract for the engineering design and construction administration services contract with Corolo Engineers, Inc. and the Vados Zone Injection Well Project of the Goodyear Water Reclamation Facility and authorize the purchase order to be issued? Do I hear a motion?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Laura Tano and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion? No discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. That was quite easy, wasn't it? All right, so now we're down to number eight and that gives you time, council. Anybody want to make any comments tonight or, first of all, make a comments? Great to see you all back. Looking forward to the, we got our other two council people back and we're back as a team again. I hope you had a great summer and I hope the people that attended the conference had a good time. Not just a good time, but learn something. Let's put that out there. We don't want to give the wrong impression of these conferences. No other remarks? No other comments? Okay, all right, well then, I'm going to turn it over to our city manager.
Mayor and council, yes, welcome back. It's good to get back in the swing of things and tonight was a fairly light agenda. We want to ease into it. Next Monday, cannot promise that. I do have one announcement, it was actually tweeted out earlier, but we received confirmation from Mace Rich early afternoon today that Burlington is locating over the market at Estrella Falls. So, this one is going in next to the Petco store. It will be about 55,000 square feet. So, it's nice to bring another store here. Mace Rich has been working closely with them and they're planning for a fall 2016 opening. So, congratulations to Mace Rich Burlington and also for other store owners that are going to be in that vicinity. But that's all I have. Just wanted to bring that to council attention.
Well, that's great. It's going to help the synergy of the area.
It will.
So, we're all very, very pleased to hear that. So, any other comment?
Just general question.
Yes, Joe.
What does Burlington sell? I'm not familiar with the store.
Clothes, coats, actually all kinds of things. Back, I used to shop there many years ago and it was primarily for clothes and coats. They may have expanded.
They have more than coats, really.
They probably do now.
They've hung their title on the coats because it must have started on the east coast and...
Actually, they're getting rid of that. It's just going to be going Burlington.
But they have everything at the store.
It's a department store.
It's a department store, okay.
Yeah. But it's, the cost is a little bit less than some of the other stores.
Right, right.
So, does that help you? Your wife will shop there, I can assure you.
You're probably right.
All right. So, the next meeting will be a work session and a regular meeting on August 31st. The work session will start at 5:00, the regular meeting will be at 6:00 p.m. So, with that, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Meeting adjourned.